Okay, this is it. Welcome to Class three, part three, The Power of Brushwork, session one. Sky and trees. This is gonna be the Painting demonstration part. It was super fun to get to see everybody's homework and what you guys have been working on. Now we're going to step up and be working on Creating form and structure and Conveying the light as it's passing over the object using a pear, a tree and a cloud. So hopefully you guys are excited. I'm gonna go ahead and pin myself here. Everybody should be able to see My easel. And am I the main focus of the camera there?
Yes.
Great. Alright, so As always, having, you know, some technical difficulties. I think my wife took over the ability to use the printer, so I was gonna Print up some references of Different lighting sources, but I think, you know what, I'm just gonna be able to make it up because she is not here. She went off for a coffee with a friend, so anyways, what I did was I have an eleven by fourteen panel here. Fourteen inches tall, eleven wide. I split it into three parts. This was, you know, completely arbitrary. You guys can do this or, you know, however you'd like. The top one, I hope you guys can see says side light. The middle one is front light and back light, and I'm just gonna very quickly brush in The idea that I'm trying to convey about form and structure that we talked about in part one of today's class. So I'm just gonna paint a quick pear, A quick tree and a quick cloud Using kind of the same theory here. So Side light, I'm going to imagine that my pear is being hit from the left side. And I think it'd be kind of fun maybe to do like a I don't know, a yellowy brownie pear, a Greenish pear and maybe a reddish pear. Does that sound okay? Or should I do green, green, green?
No, different colors.
Alright, yeah.
Traffic light.
What was that? Sorry?
Traffic light.
Traffic light, yeah. Except for the yellow of a pear is never very beautiful. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna think of Now, when I think of like a, this is totally from memory. I didn't, even though I grabbed all those references from for our Page, I don't have it open. And I don't want to be going back and forth. So you know, just ignore if you're just like, I have never seen a brownish, yellowish pear that color. Ignore that. We're going for value. So what I'm doing is I'm kind of mixing up the idea of a mother color. Right? So I'm just kind of thinking, you know, a brownish Pear, right? I should probably mix a little bigger pile than that. Just so I have enough paint.
What are your guest colors?
Oh, today, so I've got titanium white, I've got Hansa yellow light, I've got Indian yellow, I've got cadmium red medium. I initially actually had a transparent warm red up there, but I want some opacity, meaning I want to be able to cover. So I went ahead and put a cadmium red light up there. I've got a quinacridone red, Which is really interesting because I have all new lighting and I've set all my lights to natural daylight. So this is a midday light in my studio, the first time I've ever painted with that color Of a light source and all my colors look so different to me. Shows that color because I feel like Sometimes when I take my paintings into the art galleries, they have cooler lights, sometimes they have warm type light, sometimes they have natural light. And sometimes I get my artwork in there and I'm like, oh man, it looks so different than it did in my studio. So I went with the most mid Like Universal light and that's a five thousand Calvin. I've been learning a lot about lighting in the last little while. But anyways, my quinacridone red has never looked more, it's always felt much more purple.
Yeah.
Yeah. So isn't that weird? These two usually look so different from each other. It looks orange and very, now they look much closer. Ultramarine blue. The cool thing about this one is normally ultramarine blue looks very black on the camera. And now you can actually kind of see that it's blue. And, yeah, so hopefully this will video much better. I hope so, because I'm spending a lot of money on these lights. And manganese blue hue. Which again is a phthalo blue derivative, just a little bit more easy for me to control. Over here, I've got a very polluted pile of Golden ochre, Which is a transparent ochre color, but this one was literally me cleaning up from the, from my palette. So I have no idea what other colors are in there. And then I put up some burnt umber because I'm gonna want to create darks. I almost threw, put on some ivory black. And I could ask you guys that, would you guys like to see a black on there? Or are you okay with making my darks from burnt umber and ultramarine?
Yeah, from the colors.
Yeah.
You like this? Okay, great. So, I'm gonna start With a mother color, so Have I talked about mother colors this class or was that only in the color class that I talked about that?
Well, it would be the color that you make all your other colors from. The mother color.
Correct, yeah. I'm sorry, I cut you off there Sharon.
No, I'm just gonna say you start with one color that you have mixed up and then you would add other colors to it, lighter, darker, Or yellow, whatever, to get other colors.
Nailed it. Perfect description. Yep, so what I like to do is think of it almost as if I was walking into the art store Carrying my brownish Pear, you know, whatever that kind of pear is called, the brownish ones. And said, you know what, I want to paint this pear. What color, you know, what color paint do you have? And they'd be like, oh, perfect. In this hand, we have A brown pear Tube of paint. And so I will mix up a pile of that. Right? And then what I can do is I can take off from my mother and I can make its babies. So I can take a little bit of ultramarine And I can create a darker bluer version of it. So that it's A little more in the shadow. Little darker, a little cooler. Sometimes adding blue is not enough. Sometimes blue will turn it to green. So I'm gonna figure out how to counteract that, you know, sometimes it may take a little more red To get rid of some of that green. And we're gonna deal with pretending that it's a warm light source, just to keep things a little more streamlined. So over here, I've taken from the mother and I'm creating another baby. And we're just gonna pretend that this one's getting a little more light. So I can lighten it. Add a little white, but I probably want to warm it up. I can add a little Indian yellow or a little Cadmium yellow or a little Hansa yellow, whichever I have. So you can see mom And her baby, she's got her, you know, she's got her shadow baby and her light baby. So quickly, I have three colors that are related. But Are variations. So yeah, great job Sharon. That was a perfect description. And does that make sense to anybody? Again, I can't remember if I talked about that in this class. Or if that was only in the color class that I talked about that.
Yeah, I don't think I've heard it before, but, but that makes sense.
Okay, so yeah, what I like to do is sometimes like objects have an innate color. Right? So if I gave you a still life and within that still life, a yellow apple, a red apple or and a green apple, or I guess I should say pear. And I told you to paint it. You know, and it's got, and it's been side lit, it's gonna have lots of colors within those three colors. So by saying, okay, this is the mother color, this is This is color of pear. Right? This kind of brownish Color. So you can imagine That what is color of bush? What of color of tree? What is color of cloud, right? You can just look at it and say, I know that color. Like if somebody asks you, what's the color of your house? Right? You could tell them like, oh, we painted our house You know, gray or we painted our house green or we painted our house yellow. So, but that doesn't apply to When the sun is out And hitting the house from the side. Right? Because the side of your house in the light is different than the side of your house in the shadow, the color is. Right? But when people say, what's the color of your house? They're just asking generically. So now, you know, somebody said, what type of pear is it? I don't know the names of them. Bartlett, maybe? That sounds something like a name of a pear. I would just say it's the brownish kind of pear. Right? The brownish tannin.
Musk.
Basque, perfect.
Musk.
Boss.
Musk.
So yes, that's the color of this pear. We have our light coming in from the side. This is our side light section. So I know that This side of my pear is in light, this side of my pear is in shadow. So I'm just gonna grab some shadow. I like to paint from dark to light. And a lot of times If I wasn't just showing you guys all of this, I would probably have just paint started. These may have been my first brush strokes For the pear. So my light's kind of coming from the side slightly above. Right? All of a sudden, already this pear has A little more sense of depth, right? I just took a very flat sticker representation of a pear. And created, I hope, a little bit more A little bit more Of a sense of depth. Now let's add another value. Let's add the light side to it. Which is coming in from this side. Might have to make that a little more obvious for the camera, but are you guys seeing that?
Yeah.
Later? Okay, good. And who here is already asking, yeah, fun, pears are nice, but what does that have to do with clouds and trees? Or does it make sense that we're beginning to see, yeah, the structure? Right? And then alls I need to do is quickly, I'm gonna come in and just Create a little bit of a transition because you can see it's kind of a hard line between those shadows and the light Into the mid area, the mother color. So do you guys have that shape that was so just a Literally just a shape of a pear and the color of a pear? Became a round form a little bit, just by having three values?
Yes.
Let's go ahead and darken up area here. Because we're dealing with a solid. Clouds are not gonna be as solid, so they're not gonna be as Strong of darks, but when you're dealing with like a pear, sometimes trees and bushes. Clouds don't always have cast shadows. Of course, especially if they're side lit. Top lit clouds may have cast shadows on your land. But they're not usually touching the land. So that will change This, but I just thought I would go ahead and share and show a cast shadow. And how we can have a dissipated Edge quality. Meaning that it gets The shadows very strong Where it hits. In fact, let's get it even darker. The strongest shadow usually is where two objects come together Underneath. Or away from the light. Our strongest shadow is gonna be right in that area. And then it will dissipate As it goes away from the object. So this is a great thing to know for Trees, bushes, Things that are touching the ground.
Yeah, I'm glad to see you use your fingers.
Yep, I made sure I changed my painting shirt during the break.
Everything I have has a little bit of paint on it. It seems like mine too.
Nice stem.
Thank you. A little bit awkward, you know.
Chief Joe gives out a sticker that says Chief Joe's ruining your good clothes since nineteen seventy something.
Oh, that's a good one, yeah.
Yes, perfect.
I know, I almost don't like, wanna do like demos and galleries and stuff because I feel like I have to dress up. But then I know that I'm gonna ruin whatever shirt and everything else that I take. Let's fix our pear shape just a touch. Oops. That was my dirty finger making a mark over there. Alright, so do you guys see that a bit of form? I could darken it more, I can, you know.
Is it gonna be a highlight?
Well, it's a pear, so it's not very reflective, but I could definitely throw a highlight, but That doesn't actually help us in our pursuit of trees and And clouds. But I definitely can. Just gotta clean my brush. What's that?
I said, it looks like a pear to me.
Yeah.
Perfect. I love the, I love the medium value down around the bottom. The mid value. Perfect, perfect. You're done.
Alright, so now
Think of that as the reflection on the water.
Yes.
What's that?
The reflection on the water, your highlight.
Yeah.
Alright, so now we got front lit. So that one's gonna be almost easier. So what colors did I say? We got yellow or brownish, yellowish and greenish?
Hey, you gotta have a green one.
Alright. Maybe we'll make this one the green one. So I'm just thinking, you know, I know that pears aren't bright green. They're not, you know, they're not spring green like this. Not at all. But I want to make sure I got a big enough pile. So What do I do to Get rid of this? I'm gonna add a little red.
Red.
Changes it a lot.
Was that quinacridone?
Yeah, no, that was just the That was the cadmium, which is very strong. So maybe I'll just throw some ultramarine in there, which will turn it much darker. More yellow, added a little bit of both yellows. There we go. Now it's starting to feel kind of earthy. Kind of dirty, you know, it's not just that bright Pure green. Alright, suggestions. What do I do to make this a more perry green? Pear-like green.
A little yellow? I don't know.
Yeah, a little yellow.
Alright. Again, I'm not painting from any sort of a reference here for a Yellow pear, so That looks pretty good, right?
Yeah.
Alright, so let's paint pear. This one's front lit. So more of the pear is gonna probably be closer to This color. Because our color comes from The light. So again, I wouldn't always just cover The pear, but I want to do it just to show you guys an example of How I can kind of start with the native color or the Local color is It's often called the actual color of the object. But I don't often paint that way. It's just kind of I'm setting myself up for more work. But There we go, right? If I just handed you this sticker. You just think, oh, that's just kind of a generic, that's a green pear, I guess, right? I mean, maybe with a stem on it, it would be a little easier to tell. So let's add, this is facelit. So where are my shadows gonna be on this one?
Side.
Where is the light coming from?
It's facelit, meaning it's lit from behind the viewer.
Angled off.
Then it would be face on?
Yeah, so The brightest part's probably gonna be in the front of the pear. And as that light hits the pear and then wraps around it. So now, as we know, as it wraps around, it's getting darker, so the Shadow side will probably be On the back side of the pear. I'm gonna make it not quite dead on direct front light because rarely is life that way. And it's very boring. I'll show you what it would look like if it was. It's basically gonna look like a cartoon.
Yeah, just like you outlined a pear.
Yes, exactly right. So we're gonna pretend our light slightly from the left, but mostly facelit. So I'm just gonna add a little more shadow.
That's nice. Very nice.
Isn't that interesting?
Beautiful.
How you're able to just create a sense of form. I mean, we're only at two values. And I still got my mother up here without a light Colored baby or whatever, sunny Side. So let's add some warm light to that. I might even go a little bit on the warm side. I'm gonna add a little Indian yellow. Little white. So if I know that this side's slightly more shadow than this side. And you guys should go look at Eric Jacobson's paintings to see a real master of front lighting with trees and clouds.
I painted with him two years ago in Maine.
What a cool guy, huh?
Cool guy.
He is so, he is so, I love his work.
Yeah, and he's really, really just a nice guy.
You know, he comes out to the Scottsdale
Yeah, I think he was just there not too long ago, yeah. He, you know, when he lived in Oregon, he used to teach workshops.
Yeah, he's here now.
Really? He might be, yeah. What a fun Fun, nice guy. I found myself like wondering why we were Working together because I found myself just listening to him so much. So there you go, adding a little light to the front. Can see that even though it's kind of flatter Than this one Still has a sense of depth and form, I hope. So again, I want you to imagine bushes and trees and all of it. Yes. You can still get in and get some darker darks. You know, on a pear again, it's probably not floating, it's probably sitting on Something. Tabletop, a bowl, a plate.
It's a really nice pear.
Thank you.
You can be hungry.
Yeah, yeah, I know, huh?
Wouldn't the shadow be longer on this one toward the, in the back of you?
Yeah, it would probably like if the light's coming from there, like I could literally go, okay, the Lights coming here, the shadow. Could almost draw a line.
Yeah.
Michael, would that be more foreshortened?
I don't know, I mean
I didn't think it would go back quite that far, that's all.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha. Yeah, I mean, yeah, it looks like he's kind of laying down there. Let's go ahead and Subtract some of that shadow here. Gotta find a clean place in my paper towel. There you go, there you go. Now he's standing up a little more. Needs a Needs a stem.
Perfect. I like it. It's voluptuous.
There you go. Yes, that's why I like to paint pears. They're the Rubenesque fruit. Real fruits got curves. Yeah, pears are by far and away my favorite thing of the still life Family to paint. I haven't done them in a little while. I Somebody gave me one time a book of wallpaper, like samples, like you know how they come in books?
Oh, yeah.
And I just, I just did still lives on each one of the pages. And it was really fun because it was, all it was is just the, the object and then I would cast a shadow. And even though it was on a flat wallpaper, it was, kind of made these neat effects. I had a little show of those a long time ago. Long time ago, but that was way before I even knew what the heck I was gonna do, what I wanted to paint Or what I even liked painting. I was painting everything. Yeah, that cast shadow is kind of interesting, having it go right behind it, but Now I got green, so shadows are not the color of the object that
Reflected light from the object will make them a little more of a color, though.
Yeah, yeah, but the reflected light's gonna be down below it, like if this was a Reflective surface. It would come here. But I do see a lot of students in the beginning Painting Shadows, the color of the object that it's casting, but they're not. A shadow's only gonna darken the color of the thing that it's cast upon. It sounds like some kind of a weird spell.
Or Shakespeare.
Yeah. I'm always getting mistaken for Shakespeare.
Say that again, Michael.
Thou hath not to
Paint thy pear.
To cast shadows upon thy neighbor. But to reflect thy light upon thy surface. Yeah, that's kind of fun, right? Well Again, this has nothing to do with Clouds and bushes right now, but Maybe it has to do with reflections in water a little bit.
This is shiny white tablecloth.
It must be. It's the only kind of tablecloth I eat on. Okay, um it's fun just kind of taking a break, and then you come back and you look at it, and you go, there should be a little shadow here and all of that. Um, oh wait, one more thing.
Perfect.
All right, and backlit pear, this might even be more boring, okay, so we're gonna do yellow, ooh. Good challenge. Guys are mean. Is there any other, oh, red, no, red. A red pear, probably not that red, what color is a red pear?
Dark. English red.
What's English red?
Well, um, uh, oxide. It'll lean a little bit toward that.
Yeah, they're kind of red, in other words, they're pretty red.
They have a little yellow in them, on, like, are they spotty?
I don't know, somebody look up red pear real quick.
Actually, I think they lean more toward the purple, don't they, in the shadows?
Yeah, I would, that's what I would say, blue or uh, a little towards ultramarine.
Also have yellow spot.
All right, I'm responding to everything you guys say, so.
I see one that has, it's kind of purply red. More sort of quinacridone, and at the bottom, it's got some kind of coming upward radiating from the bottom, a little yellow, otherwise some of the red ones are just almost plum colored, all solid.
Yeah, and they almost have like freckles on them, some of them.
Yeah, I'm not worrying about the detail. Some of them like long walks on the beach.
Freedom while collecting shells.
Yeah, let's see, so. Am I even close to any kind of a pear, again, thinking shadow? This one's facelit.
No, that.
This one's backlit.
You're saying the shadows are never, or rarely they're not the same color as the object.
Right, they're usually darker and well, depending on your light source. But generally cooler.
If it's a warm object, it's a cool shadow, if it's a cool object, it's a warm shadow.
If it's a warm light. Warm light, cool shadow, no, the uh, color of the object has nothing to do with the shadow it casts. But the shadow on the object is fully dependent on the light source color or temperature. Does that feel, oh gosh, that's pretty close, that. Man, that's from me literally listening to all of you, oh, it's a little yellow, it's a little blue, no, it's kind of purple, and I just put it all in there. Takes a village.
That's Simpson Pairs, is it?
No idea. I literally know my pears is reddish, brownish, greenish, and yellowish.
Most of the red ones I've gotten were from the Anjous.
It's a red Bartlett.
There is a red Bartlett. And a Basque, which is that color.
Yeah, Basque has kind of.
Basque's brown.
My favorite pear.
Or that one. Basque is the ones we see in the store the most, right, like just kind of all the time? Kind of brownish, Spanish one?
The Basque, they don't, Bartlett goes bad really fast, in my opinion. Stay nice for a long time.
So this one's gonna be almost the inverse of this, where the lightest light is hitting the foreground area. This one's gonna be more in the shadow, as it's coming towards us, cause our light is coming from behind and enveloping. And I'm gonna put this one, if the light's coming this side, I'm gonna put the light just a touch more behind it to the right. I'm gonna push my values just a touch. Meaning make it a little darker, maybe it's in a dark room and we're looking out at some light.
You can do whatever you want, Mike.
It's your pear. Uh, this is kind of fun, never just painted pears from memory and from uh communal pairs. All right, so there we've got pear with a touch of shadow. Cleaning my brush. I've basically used the same brush the whole time so far. Um, just so it's just to clean the brush, for those of you who are new amongst us. The key is to squeeze out as much paint as possible. So I just keep doing that. And then I will hit it into my paint thinner, which is just down here to my right. I'll dab it in there a couple times. And then I'm just gonna do that again. But by pulling off as much paint in your paper towel as possible, you make the cleaning a lot easier. A lot of people just want the paint thinner to do all the work, but the truth is, most of the work is done with the paper towel. If I'm not clean, you know, or as clean as I want, I can just do it one more time. Until basically I'm pulling very little color off. If I was changing from this red, let's say to a bright blue. I might want to either change brushes or really get it clean, but because I'm only just lightening this. You know, I'm barely pulling off any color.
Is that true with um acrylic too, would you do the same process except with water?
Yeah, and part of what I'm thinking about there, thank you, yeah, um, I should ask the pro. As the new, as the new uh acrylic painter on the block. Um, I shouldn't be answering, but um yeah, just think about like how much paint do you want to put down in your sink, right, it's better to put it into the paper towel and in the garbage. And it just makes
Give you one hint, I know a person who puts a wad of uh raw wool, cause she has sheep, but you could get most anything, but it goes in the bottom of the cleaning. The, your water or your, whatever your brush cleaner is. And then all of that pigment settles into that wool. And you can just take it out.
That's a great idea.
I've never heard that before, that's pretty cool.
Where do I get wool?
That's cause, that's cause you're not an old China painter.
Farmer's market, uh Paco would probably work too.
You could probably get straight wool at a knitting store. It'd probably be expensive, though. You can order it online in a bulk, or a lot of people do the wool um felting. Make little animals and felting on, on sweaters and things. And it's, it's available everywhere, and you can buy the one that's just been carded also. Washed and painted and carded. Yeah, you want to get it carded and washed, or at least washed, cause otherwise there's so much oil in it. Yeah, and smelly.
We were cleaning with uh, with oil at the time, so that's, I guess, why we didn't fuss about the oil part.
Cheryl, once you get a lot of paint in that wool, do you take tweezers or something and lift it out?
Yeah, lift it out and throw it out, or pour the stuff off the top, but anyway, it just stays in the bottom and and then you can lift it out and you can even rinse it out if you really want to.
And reuse it.
So here would be an example where a reflection and a shadow would be nearly the same. Cause it's backlit. Trying to get around that little screw there.
So in that case, you do have the local color, the color of the pear.
Well, cause it's the sha- it's the reflection, but let's put the shadow in there as well. Cause they are not the same. So it's slightly more lit this side, so then the shadow would slightly come off. Yeah, it gets, it gets a little bit awkward there. But if you're dealing with a tree and grass and not a um shiny white tablecloth like I like to eat on. It wouldn't matter, right, cause you're only dealing with the shadow.
Because you don't have a white tablecloth?
Not if it's like a tree or a cloud or.
I'm trying to look around your hand. And I can't do that on the cam- with the camera.
That's funny. Sorry, uh, I'm not looking at the screen, I just thought maybe one leaf would be nice.
You know, when I was a kid, I picked pears to make money. Those are the worst things in the world to pick, because they have like a syrupy on the leaves and stuff, and it gets all over your arms, and it feels like spider webs. I hated picking pears.
I don't know, I picked corn and those leaves would just slice the, all these thousands little slices.
It's like a paper cut.
Yeah, oh man, just thousands of them, yeah, eventually we were just wearing masks and full clo- I mean, cause that was hundreds of acres of it.
Yeah, kids used to do that, you know, they used to pick for money. If you lived in uh, in farming area, you know, for money, they would pick pears or my sons have uh, you know, built hay and now kids just don't do that anymore.
Here, here it was de-tasseling the corn.
Oh, let's not talk about that. I am so allergic to that pollen. And when we lived in the valley, every several years, it would be full of corn, cause they rotated, but everybody rotated at the same time, it seemed, and ah, that I would, my allergies would be so bad, oh.
You wouldn't do well here.
Michael, on the backlit, I'm sorry, Cheryl, is it is the uh backlit directly, like in the middle of the pear, from the back?
To the right slightly.
To the right slightly.
There are lights coming around this side still. Can see a little bit of light catching on the edges. Mostly from the back. I just find fully facelit things kind of boring and flat. That's a bush.
They're lovely.
It's like a bush to me.
There we go.
Looks like a pineapple.
It's not, it's a bush.
I just planted three pineapples tops.
I was thinking that if a pear could be a bush, that's it.
There you go, yeah. And here's a bush. A bush.
Those are very creative bushes.
I found bushes to be some of the most creative vegetation on the planet.
Boy, they are, I tell ya.
Yeah, they, they get around, I think ivy maybe is some of the most creative, it just gets everywhere.
I'm telling you, those all look like pears.
Yep, well, I'm keeping them pear-like, just to show you the similarity. Yeah, those are the pears you don't want to eat. If somebody gives you a choice, always take the left pear. All right.
Michael, did we ask why they aren't green?
Why what aren't green?
They don't look green, those bushes don't look green on my screen.
Oh, cause that's just the shadows. Putting, I'm, I'm, so these, you're right, that was a good question, I'm painting these from dark to light. And I guess I could paint them similar colors, let's do that. So let's do this frontlet guy as a green tree, a green bush. Good question, you know, he's a challenge me, I appreciate it. A brownish bush, but I'm gonna stay with the green, just cause I'm gonna, so I don't have to keep cleaning my brush over and over and over.
I was gonna say, it's a good instructor that teaches so well, that his students challenge him.
Maybe. Let's pretend that's true.
Looks like a baby bird.
Did you use your wipe away method with, with these little trees?
Sure could have, that would have probably made it easier, right now I'm having the paint thinner thicker and thicker, because I'm doing wet into wet.
That's what happens to me. Thicker and thicker and thicker.
Thicker and thicker and thicker, exactly right.
Your painting on have any texture to it?
What's the question?
Does that board that you're painting on have much texture?
No, and I'm painting on primer, so it's really slippery. Just literally house primer. So I'm having a hard time getting it to stick a little bit. I thought I would really like it, and it's gray, it's not white. So I didn't use um uh, just the wipe away method and make transparency, cause that would have been really easy, and I did tell you guys I was gonna do that, so I'll do that real quick here in just a second. All right, so there's our frontlit bush, it could get brighter in the foreground if we wanted it to, like if it was really catching nice extreme light. Yeah, I'm having a hard time adding dark to it. To kind of really push some of those shadows. That's bush-like, kind of like more of a monster or something. Little cuddly guy. Alright, so sidelet, let's do brown bush. Well, let's go down to red since I'm in the red section already. So this one's backlit. So I need to make a dark or a dark brown. Not that green that I got on there. There we go. And let's get to some of that brighter red. Kind of uh super shiny, isn't it? Hard to see into those shadows, let's. Let's knock those shadows down, if I do this brush stroke, I think, nope, that's more shiny. We do it this way, yep, there we go. I've also got side lights up now, which I've never had before. Let me know if they're too annoying or if I can, if I should turn off side lights or maybe make the angle different. You can see I can really move them now.
That's good.
Always experimenting, always trying to figure out how to make the presentation a little better.
Someone's mic is open.
That's lovely.
Backlit red bush tree monster. Alright, back to brown.
If you were doing a trees like that where. Where they were closer. In the foreground and you wanted some detail, that's what. That's what I struggle with. Knowing how to do it and make it not just look like a bush.
You want it to look like a bush.
Oh, if you're doing a bush, I guess.
Not a pear.
Not a tree.
Oh. So I'm gonna do a little wipe away here cuz we're gonna get to lighter. So that's one good thing about. This paint is it. Doesn't absorb very much the primer. Makes it slippery, so you can already kind of see the structure in there. So let's add some color, go from our darks to our lights. Just like in our pear.
I just feel like this is a super good exercise.
Yes.
Good, you guys are the first students I've ever done it with. Yeah, I kind of made myself laugh when I was just like, the class is called. Pear tree. Or pear bush clouds or pear tree clouds, I don't remember what I called it. That was funny, it reminded me of the all the. Arguments right now about. Um, the dementia tests that evidently the presidents are taking and bragging about. People, camera, I don't know even what it is, but.
Oh, he talked about that some time ago, I don't think anybody's really taking any right now.
Okay, good, I just thought it was funny. Alright, no, no politics, no politics. But when I said it to myself, I, that's what it reminded me of pear. Cloud, trees.
That's funny, Michael. Gonna make me giggle.
Just things that don't go together, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, psychological testing presidents don't.
I don't think that's a bad idea.
Well, like they said this morning, who would make the test? Who would grade the test? And how would you get? An unprejudiced. Person. If there will always be a charge from one side or the other, that it's wrong.
Yeah.
Maybe it should be like SATs or something like that. Just a standard I test that everybody has to take. Or all presidential candidates have to take. So they can be compared against each other.
Right, so still got like. Uh, some odd brush strokes that are, you know, showing up as just glare. And that's the tough thing with glare, cuz it always wants to appear lighter.
I I think your camera is washing out the darks a little bit. Something, the lighting is washing out the darks.
Yeah, I might have to try turning off. Or changing, again, I'm just experimenting with all these different lights. No.
This position, it's better.
Which one, this one?
Position that you're in right now, it's better, it, there's no glare, the the.
Oh, yeah, that's standing where, I put the camera where I would stand.
Yeah.
Those are funny, those are pretty cute little bushes.
They are. I could paint bushes like that.
I'm dying to see the clouds.
Alright. Get some clouds.
I have problems with clouds.
Everybody has.
You put a little shadow under each one of those little bushes?
Oh, what's that?
You can put a shadow under each one of those little bushes.
Sure.
Round them.
That bottom bush has a face in it.
I see it.
Uh, it looks like a cat.
Yeah, the middle one does look like a little puppy or a cat or something.
This light's coming this way. So then we got this kind of shadow behind it. And this one sideways.
Michael, maybe if you hit the, oh, see the the. Primer with the little sandpaper, it would give it a little tooth.
Oh, totally, normally I would come over it with gesso, but I was like, oh, gray's kind of cool, let's see. So, you know, I'm using you guys as an experiment. I was hoping it would be a little nicer. But I do like it, I mean, it's nice and it's. Versatile, but it's, yeah.
Could you, yeah, could you mix your gesso and your gray primer together?
I don't know that, I I would be scared, but maybe.
If it's both water-based, you could.
Yeah, I mean, it's supposed to be water-based.
Well, isn't gesso generally water-based?
Yeah. Alright, let me clean my palette. I see no sky colors in there, no cloud colors, we're gonna keep it kind of on the basic side of cloud.
There are no green clouds.
Yeah, that's all we need.
I love that green.
Well, that could be cloud color.
Sure.
Yeah, kind of brown.
Well, it looks gray to me.
Could be your mother color and then you could add different colors to it. I love this idea of a mother color and then. Adding darks and lights.
Well, it certainly seems like it would save you on page.
Didn't we talk about that before, mother colors?
Yeah, in the color class, yeah.
I wasn't in the color class, so new new concept for me.
Yeah, so a lot of, a lot of, excuse me. A lot of times I will um. Figure out my values, my lights and darks, I'll figure out my design and then I'll take time. And kind of figure out like, what's the big five, six colors, four, five, six colors? I want in my painting, and I know they're none of these cuz. Life just isn't this color unless you're at a birthday party or used car lot. Um, but um, so life exists in the grays and then the earthy colors. And um. So I will mix up a a good sized pile, bigger than I'm mixing now. Um, of mother colors and they're just kind of like shortcuts, again, it's like. I just like to pretend I'm going to the store, I show them the picture. That I'm planning to paint and I just point to different areas, I'm like, say, say, I'd like a tube of this. I'd like a tube of that. You know, color. And um. Yeah, I'm curious, let's turn these side lights off. And see what happens.
Better.
I was really hoping. It would be less glaring.
I don't see glare on the picture, I just see glare on your uh palette.
Yeah, me too.
Oh, good.
Yeah, so it's not really a problem, as far as I'm concerned, it's not a problem on the picture.
Yeah, and then watch this, if I just change the direction of the brush strokes.
Exactly.
Oh my god, look at that.
That's dark.
So that's by only having overhead light, so that may work. Better for this kind of stuff.
Oh, my goodness, look at that dark.
Wow.
Woo, now I gotta do that again, that's the problem. Is whatever, cuz those little tiny brush strokes pick up the light. Which is always hard for me to think about when I'm like, okay, the gallery lighting is gonna be overhead.
Well, that's what I was just wondering about, how you tell what it's gonna look like when it's not just overhead lighting.
Yeah, I know, it's a trick. That's why I also don't like my paintings to be too, too shiny, you know, oils are very shiny when they're wet. And then they'll dry much more matte, which is good for me. For me, so you know, next week I could show you these paintings and they look. Just not as shiny, not as reflective. But the colors also look a little duller when you uh. Gonna bring a little bit of light onto the top of this, like it's reflected from. The sky. There we go. Alright, clouds, huh? The people want clouds.
Yes.
Alright, so.
Where really do you see this real all blue sky? There's always some variation there.
No, you almost never see white, white clouds and blue, blue sky.
No. We do out here.
Yes, we do.
You see white clouds?
Yes, we have white clouds here. Sometimes they're almost all white and then. Ten minutes later, they'll have, you know, whatever the direction, the shadows, they'll have shadows and then gray shadows. It's not, it's not colorful, it's just gray and white and blue sky. Uh, that's like midday, you know.
I've been having fun looking at clouds since you told us about perspective clouds.
About what clouds, sorry?
Oh, the perspective of clouds.
Oh, yeah.
I can't believe I never figured that out before.
Isn't it wild? No, I mean, it's so much stuff, like I'm still learning things. And I'm like, how have I been around for almost fifty years and looked at these things that my entire life and. Yeah, you just. We just don't dissect what we're seeing because it just is. And it's not like it's hurting us or helping us to know. So, you know what I mean, our body's just like, yep, that's, that is, and we don't think about it until somebody tells us. It is. I was, I've actually been studying about it, you know. To a degree about like um. Again, remember when I was telling you about the uh. Four people and you're talking to and then they get blurrier as they go away as they're waiting to talk to Michelle? They, that's just our body just editing out, so it, so it can focus on these things. And so our, that's what our brain is constantly, constantly doing is just editing. What we're seeing, you know, for our own well-being, otherwise just too much data coming in all the time. So it's kind of fun as an artist, we have that opportunity. To go back. And start to see things again. And uh. Yeah, it's a, it's a neat opportunity that we get to go and observe. Reality or life or the planet or the beautiful, you know, whatever you wanna say. Whereas other people are just gonna spend the rest of their lives basically blind to it.
Yeah.
Right, and it's not their fault, it's not, I mean, we are better people than them, but that's not the reason. It's that. You know, it's just literally survival, our body, our brains are just taking on. The most important information to basically keep us alive.
But once you point that out to someone.
Right.
The differences and the things, it's like. My husband's family came from. A non-artistic background. And um. When I started to paint again. I would notice things and I would say, oh, look at that color and look at that color. And the next thing I know, he's calling me to the back door going, look at the color in the sunset. And it's really cold because it just brought everything out. You know, it's, I've been doing that with my grandchildren as well, just pointing things out. And hoping they absorb some of it.
I have. I have my children, my children who are old. My children have been making fun of mom's elizering crimson skies. For fifty years. And and they used to say, no, it's not up there. Now. Every so often, I'll get a text and say, mom, we have the most amazing.
Very good.
And and my thought is, my work here is done.
Yeah, yeah, you can go peacefully on to the great. You've done your work here, you kept your kids alive and you've taught them about crimson skies, you've done it. That's motherly success, I imagine.
Yeah. And save enough money to take care of me and my dotage.
There you go, exactly, yeah.
That's, that was the other lesson. But but don't ever forget the lizard's crimson sky.
Yeah, I have a story that I've told in other classes about um. When my daughter was young, now in art school in Boston, um. And she was in her chair, baby chair, whatever, probably, she was probably only three or four. And sitting in the backseat, we were driving up to the coast at sun, kind of towards sunset, and we drove past this red barn and she just gasped. In the backseat, you know, just sitting there quietly and all of a sudden just this random gasp. And um, we, you know, we're like, what's going on, you know, what is it? She's like, did you see that barn? One side of it was orange and the other side was purple. Ooh. She's like, well, actually, it was a red barn. And I was like, oh, that's so weird, you know, why, why would that have been, why would that have happened? And again, she's only like three or four years old. And again, she's only like three or four years old. You know, and uh she's quiet for quite a while, like I've literally forgotten about the conversation, and all of a sudden she speaks up, she's like, is it because the? Sunlight is yellow and the shadows are blue?
Oh, my goodness.
Purple, and I about died, I was like, oh my gosh, that is so crazy.
A Rembrandt in the backseat.
Yes.
But she's, I mean, she's been a colorist her whole life, like she literally, like on a trip out to the coast again, but slightly later. Uh a lady was being polite in the gallery, you know, leans down to her, she's like, do you paint? My daughter's like, yes, and she's like, oh, what do you paint with? You know, she's expecting, I don't know what, just whatever, and she goes, oh, a split primary palette.
Well, you've done your job well as a father.
Yeah.
Yes.
The fact that she still likes it, I didn't ruin it for her is the biggest win.
She will be as famous as you are, Michael, someday.
Yeah, she was, she's definitely got the uh. Yeah, well, I'll be curious, I don't know what she's gonna do with it still. But a- at least I know she'll have a creative life, I mean, she just went to Barcelona last week. Just to go look at architecture and art, you know, that was her spring break. All her friends went partying and she went to Barcelona to look at artwork. And paid for it herself.
Well, that's excellent.
Did she see all the gaudi buildings?
Yeah, and the new church or the old church that's finally open and finally, finally finished.
Oh, it is? Oh, my gosh.
Yeah, so we had been there eight years ago, and it was, they were so happy that it was nearly done, and so. I was really excited, but that was, that was probably the main reason she wanted to go back to see it. Uh, that looks, it's almost too hard to see, I might have to paint a background color, or maybe we can just go.
I was wondering about that, if you had to put a sky behind it for your clouds to show up and be dramatic.
Yeah, they might, because. Think I'm gonna have to paint some reverse on there. Kind of a funny pear-shaped cloud.
Well, they come in all shapes.
Sure do.
I don't know whether I don't have as much imagination as I had as a child, but used to be when I was a child, I could look at clouds and see things in them. Now I don't.
I think you would if you actually sat there and thought about it. It was kind of funny, because um when I was looking up all these references, there was a whole section of. People just drawing over the tops of clouds and explaining all the things they were seeing in them. Kind of funny, kind of cute, lots of cats. People definitely see cats in clouds.
No dogs?
I didn't see too many, maybe I'm looking in the cat cloud section, I don't know.
I'm a dog person, not a cat person.
So what you want to do when you're thinking about these different objects is thinking about the fact that they are, you know, translucent. Or very, very solid, or could be solid and then more translucent on the side, so that's where brushwork. Really starts to come into play. Is, you know, the 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 shape, the form can be very similar. But it really, what starts to differentiate, I don't know, I painted that so yellow, what really starts to differentiate it is. The treatment of the brushwork. And the edges are really where it will get to see a lot of that, so. You know, welcome, finally, the end of class three to where the title of this class finally comes into play. So we're gonna see that here in just a little bit, I hope. As I paint a background of all these clouds that are almost invisible.
Now, is this something you're giving us as homework, Michael, to do something like this?
Yeah, something like this, however much, you know, you want to do, if you want to do tree, cloud. You know, maybe you just do one of each, maybe, you know, and it can be as creative as you want, um if you would like to just. You know, you can ignore pear, but what I really thought was important was just to see that it's not the same, but it's. Really almost the same. Right, let me put some uh, let's put a blue sky behind there and just make a generic blue sky.
But but making the form really is the same.
It is the same, exactly.
It is exactly the same, your your shadows have to be from the same area, pretty much, your. Highlights, your your light is going to be in the same area, it's actually exactly the same. But I think we forget that sometimes, you probably.
Everybody wants everything to be different, that's like. In all, in all my classes, they'll be like, okay, I learned how to paint this and that, but now how do I paint cats? Or now, how do I paint this, I'm like, it's all the same, they're not, you're not, I don't, nobody. No good teacher teaches how to paint a thing. Even though they'll sell those classes, you know, how to paint, you know, your pets, how to paint. All this, but it's not, it's just how to paint, shapes, values, colors and edges. And then maybe recognizing, like, is there textures, or is it, what's, you know, maybe helping that thing to look different?
Okay, that cloud really is pear-shaped.
Yeah, they're all pear-shaped.
Cumulus clouds, don't they call those cumulus clouds when they're tall like that?
Yes.
No, they're, they're called pear-shaped.
Okay, I I I was trying to help, but yeah.
And the bushes, same.
They're all pear trees.
Actually, when you look at certain trees. That are fruit trees, they do resemble the fruit. I've noticed that pear trees are tall and they're thinner on the top. And apple trees are generally round, round. Um, not huge differences, but um my dad used to have dwarf. Trees in his back, fruit trees, and and they did sort of resemble the fruit that was on them to a certain extent.
Yeah, that's pretty cool.
Cherry tree look like.
A pear tree is wider at the bottom. Yeah, it only with the trunk. If they're thinner at the top, if you ever see, like, there's lots of pictures of Bradford pears, because they're a really invasive. Species, but uh they are, almost all of them are thinner at the top, wider at the bottom kind of things. And yet, an apple tree will grow round. Just round.
That's much better, Michael, you needed the blue.
Yeah, definitely, and I made that one a little darker for the backlit one. So there we go, and what I'll do is just take some of these edges. I can come in with them, and I'm just gonna soften, so I kind of paint it up towards the edge, but not all the way, and I can. With the clouds, you know, and I don't want to soften all the edges, I want to be selective.
Interesting.
Soft edges will give us nice soft clouds.
But if you zoom your camera on the clouds in real life, they all have fuzzy edges. Michael froze.
Yes, Michael's frozen. And he's not talking.
Am I?
Shall we talk about him?
Yes.
Oh, sure. Now he's moving again, we better not.
You froze for.
You guys say you liked me better when you can't hear me, what was that?
No, we're gonna talk about you.
Okay.
While you weren't here.
Yeah.
But we didn't. You came back too soon.
So, yeah, it'd be fun to like paint a background, you know, around these, so we could see that glowy edge more. You know, I could just simply take. And just on, even on this edge.
He frozen again?
He was trying to trick us.
Concentrating.
Yeah.
So, yeah, just, you know, maybe, I was thinking maybe a little darker, a little cooler, just to show off that, that rim light on that one. Um, could even get darker. Um, can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So there we go, not the vineyard that I intended to paint today, but I think this was a lot of fun. Um, and yeah, the important thing. And I think. I think what I need to do is get a new camera again, because this camera just keeps adapting to no matter what light I change it to. It really wants to kind of show it as bright.
There might be an adjustment you can make to it, but I have no.
Yeah, there is, but then, yeah. What I need to do is just find a nice old used iPhone, they shoot the best, it seems like.
I find that too, my favorite was the iPhone seven.
Ah, interesting. Yeah, I can probably find one of those used for cheap, if I can still get it to communicate with a camera or the.
Yeah, because you can't sell them or anything, I have a six, and uh that was my favorite.
Oh, good, yeah, and my daughter's twelve, I think I have a thirteen, and it, mine's all cracked, you know, it it then get dropped, so. Maybe what I'll do is just turn this one into the. Camera for class, because, yeah, sure shoots much nicer than this does. Um anyways, so that's class, I'm not gonna do the vineyard because we're already forty minutes long. Um, so I will work on the vineyard and then probably end up finishing it a little bit in class or whatever painting I'm working on. Um, or video it or something. Um, or join me tomorrow, but yeah, so you guys can see this, right, like? The form, the form is the form, the structure, the structure, the structure, and that really does come into. Uh variations in edge quality, I mean, you can see how soft the clouds are, right, now firm, the, at least the green pear is. And then the bushes have kind of, they're firm, but then they have kind of broken up edge quality a little bit, but not soft as much. Depending on your lighting conditions, content, you know, there's no rules, it's all just guidelines and then. Deciding what you want for your image, so I have a lot of paintings have a lot, a lot of soft edges. And then other paintings where everything is hard edges, and but just as a kind of a guideline again. You know, soft wispy floating clouds, don't they feel like they're floating, you know, or are both of the other options? Firm and on the ground, so. Great, all right, let me get these cords out of here and I'll move back to the camera and say goodbye.
Thanks, Michael, for a good class.
Yes.
Enjoy it. Yes, thank you.
And uh, Michael, our homework is um uh the this type of study?
Yeah, something in line with this, you can see that was quite a bit of work, I gave you guys a huge amount of references that we went through. Um, yeah, I just kind of want you to get this idea, if you want to do something similar to what I did, great. If that seems a little too much, you don't want pear-shaped clouds all over your place, I get it. Um, you know, if you just wanted to make a landscape and ignore the pears, but having them in mind with some trees, bushes, or, you know, but uh. That's great, whatever it is you guys want to do to help lock in this lesson.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you tomorrow.
Thank you.
All right, yeah, I'll see you guys tomorrow morning, that's crazy.
Same time.
All right, guys, have a great afternoon.
You too.
Thank you.
Bye bye.